Welcome to the Mound City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, December 10th, six o'clock. We're in Mound Council chambers. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
We have two amendments, one to the consent agenda and one to item seven on the regular agenda. The first one on the consent agenda will be item S, a resolution approving contributions for 2024. And the regular agenda item is, will be seven C, which is a resolution amending the early start agreement to Lake Minnetonka Flats. Those are both in front of all five of you.
Okay. Everybody good with that? All right, so we got our agenda with amendments. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the two amendments.
Okay, you got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, we got our agenda. All right, now we got our consent agenda. We got a long one. Who wants to go through this?
I'd like to pull a couple.
Okay.
G, H, and I.
G.
H, and I.
I, okay. So besides the rest of those, who wants to read through those?
I can do that, but, um, so we're amending, oh. Do I need to add S?
Yeah.
Okay. What does S need to say exactly?
Oh, it's great. We'll just.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, this one. All right. Okay, so consent agenda. Items A through R, A through S, removing G, H, and I. Approve payment of claims. B, approve minutes, none. C, approve resolution approving permits for the 2025 Polar Plunge on January 25th. D, approve reappointments of David Good, Drew Heel, Nick Rosner to the Mound Planning Commission for three-year terms, ending on December 31st, 2027. E, approve resolution approving permits for the 2025 Spirit of the Lakes Festival, Thursday, January 17th through Saturday, July 19th, and waiving fees. F, approve ordinance amending Chapter 101 of the Mound City Code regarding general administrative provisions related to planning case escrow accounts, electrical permit fees, and plumbing fees. Moving to J, approval of dock program multiple slip in-and-out service contract. K, Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, JPA. L, master subscriber agreement for Minnesota Court Data Services for government agencies. M, pay request number eight and final in the amount of $8,404.66 to Mingre Construction. N, pay request number three in the amount of $123,511.73 to Widmer Construction. Zero, pay request number three for $29,044.26 to New Look Contracting. P, pay request number three in the amount of $124,832.28 to Create Construction. And Q, pay request number three and final in the amount of $1,708.78 to Allied Blacktop. R, pay request number one in the amount of $24,562.9 to Pipe Services. And S, resolution approving contributions for 2024.
Okay, so does anybody want to talk about those ones?
At all?
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus G, H, and I.
Motion to approve?
Yep. And a second, please.
Second?
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember McIneney?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. Okay, so all that passes except for G, H, and I. And go ahead.
And I, they had all of them pulled because they were all related to the docks. I did get a call from the constituent who was very upset about the increase in the dock rights. And I tried to share with them that even with our increase, we're 50% of what most cities around the lake are charging. But they were upset about that, and more so, they were upset about the fact that dock funds were going to be used to take out trees. Now, I'm not on the Dock Commission, but I assumed that those were trees on the common sites, not trees throughout the city. But even if it was trees throughout the city, I would support that, but that's not the case. So I just wanted to bring forth their complaints, their concerns about this. They felt that the dock money should stick with the docks and that, you know, they were concerned about the increased cost and the impact on their taxes.
You're on the Dock Commission?
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we approved, it was unanimous, we approved the fee schedule changes to stick with the long-term financial plan. It was, you know, just to stick with what we were doing. And then we talked about the budget line item in particular for trees. And those, you know, for anyone else that might be listening with a dock, it's the money in the docks fund to take down trees in the docks commons are funded by the dock fees. It's not like city general fund money. That's, we have money in there for the rest of the city's trees.
As a city, we take care of the commons, right? Or do, or are the residents taking care?
Well, we hire someone to take, like, take down the tree, yes. If they can't do it. But there's separate money for the rest of the city for the other trees, but.
And these trees are ash-bore?
Yeah, they're ash.
Does anybody else have any comments on it? It's your last one. Go ahead.
I argued about this last year at this time, about the commons, the dock fees being used for property that's owned by the city of Mound. I lost that battle, but I concur with Sherri that we should not be using dock funds to pay for taking down trees, even if they're ash trees. Maybe there's some grant money there. But I went through this in detail last year at this time, and I still disagree with using, this is not, this is not correct. But that's my opinion.
Any other? So do you want to do anything different about this or just a comment?
Well, I was neutral on it, but because the person spoke with such compassion about it, I felt that I should at least raise it tonight and, you know, share their comments and concerns. You know, my feeling is that I, I'm assuming that the Dock Commission did real thorough work in making their process, and I probably would support the docks commission's recommendation.
And again, they're unanimous in support.
Yeah, and like the end of our conversation was, we're raising the fees so that the people that pay to have a dock and have their commons cleared is self-sufficient and it's not coming from the city's general fund. So like, if someone that doesn't have a dock, they're not, like, in the Dreamwood Commons, if a tree fell down, someone who lives in the middle of town is not paying for someone else's.
Them to be able to access their boat.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay. So we got to vote on all these, so can we do them all three at once or do we got to do them separate?
Like kind of adding them to the consent agenda?
The consent agenda is done, so it has to be each, we have to do each one. Separate? Okay. All right, so G, docks and commons, commission reappointment, Heidi Peterson. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'd like to make a motion to move to reappoint Dock Commissioner Heidi Peterson.
Okay, you got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, two seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that's approved. And then we got H, approve official dock map addendum. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the dock map addendum.
Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. And I, approve resolution amending dock program license fees. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution amending dock program license fees.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second.
And any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes. Okay, so now we're on to comments and suggestions from anyone present that the item is not on the agenda. You can bring, come up, give us your name, address, and give us three minutes. And just so you know, if you were here for the consent agenda and your item was on there, that was, all that's passed now, so. Anybody wants to come up? Do you want to come up? Give us your name and address.
Tom Stramstead, 2968 Pelican Point Circle. Hennepin County, there was, tax levies were supposed to be on the agenda tonight, I thought.
It is.
It is?
Yeah.
I missed it.
Yeah, we'll have a public comment. That's number eight, right? Number eight?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Anybody else wants to come up? All right, not hearing anybody. Number six, we'll go to Orno Police Department, activity report for November.
Just looking over the past month, November 1st through November 30th, we look like we've had about 77 calls for service in the Mound area. That's a little down. And the last few weeks, we, I've noticed it pretty severely. The cold weather has ground down our calls for service. I kind of call, the guys are going, gals are going into kind of self-initiated modes now and they're finding things to do. So you might see them walk in your neighborhoods, checking doors, checking houses. There's just, you get, at one point, our main fur that dispatches us from Hennepin County has gone quiet in the middle of the night for six hours with nothing in the whole area. So it's getting, with cold weather hits, I mean, it could be, it's a good thing, but when cold weather hits, it's just going to get a little slow, and that's a good thing. But we're still, nothing is tweaking on what we normally handle, our medicals, our domestics, our disorderlies. We're handling them just on a regular basis. Nothing, no high numbers, like one or two maybe at a time, but that's, I mean, it happens everywhere. So nothing really is changing on that board. I don't know if you guys have any questions, as if you've seen anything.
Does council have any questions?
I was specifically interested in how many individual assist calls you had where the police was there by themselves or you were, or those calls where you were there with the fire department, because we were looking at the duplication of services and costs.
With, like, lift assists is what you're talking about. Yes, I brought that to my chief last week along with the e-bike information. He's got everything set to go for, I think tomorrow's your police commission meeting, and he's going to bring you guys up to speed on that stuff. He, he's contacted, like, Hennepin County Dispatch, and we got all the numbers kind of put together on that stuff so that he can give you accurate readouts on it. But from what I understand, one of the entities in our area, we're, we're supposed to be meeting with them to discuss those lift assist issues, so.
Yeah, specifically, I'd heard that there's a challenge that we have, because of the negligence of the property owner, that there's a woman at Grandview who the police or the fire department is having to assist her getting down the stairs to go to dialysis. Have you guys been involved in that?
More than likely, we probably have been. I'm not familiar with the incident. Typically, we, to us, we'll go on our own if we can as much as possible. If we can't do it, that's when the fire comes out. And I am not really familiar with the Grandview Boulevard one. I can look it up and check for you, see what that is. But typically, we go to private house, you know, and in Mound, we go to private homes and stuff to help people up if they've fallen or, and the main thing is to check for injuries, make sure they aren't injured and stuff, so. And that usually would insist on us calling for ambulance, not fire.
Well, I specifically would like to see the information about Grandview, because I'd like to potentially have the council look into, looking at ordinances, our attorney can tell us if we can do this, to maybe set up a licensing system for, I think, multifamily over 10 units so that we have some way of getting these landlords to be responsive to the health and safety of the people who live in their buildings. When you've got a woman in a wheelchair on a third floor with no elevator.
There's no elevator?
The elevators don't work in the building.
That's at Grandview?
Yeah.
If I may, the elevator is working now.
It's working now, that fixed?
Yeah, just to clarify.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear. Just as I was getting ready to come down. But we might still want to look at that, I think, as a caution in the future.
Yeah, the chief will have stuff tomorrow, and he might be able to speak more onto that information if he's talked to other cities as to what, how they're handling all that and how they're handling the call load of lift assists and paging out fire. But typically, if we can do it on our own, we'll do it on our own. We have three, four guys on on a shift. If we, we'll pull them down to help out, so.
Now, how is the social worker? Is she still with you guys?
Yes, she is. Yep. She, she's usually forwarded all our caseloads that involve multiple calls and then people needing assistance, like, WeCan stuff, or, you know, just housing or anything social work-related she receives, and then she reaches out to them. So she's fairly busy. She's also with other agencies, so we split her time with her, so.
She came and spoke to us last year. It'd be nice to have her come back and give us sort of an annual update on things, trends that she's seeing in the community.
All right, I can forward that and see if she'll make a time for you guys, like, she can come down with me or something, or.
Yeah, just reach out to me and then I'll connect her.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you for coming up.
I, sorry, just a few more things. They wanted me to relay here. Should I go through it? Oh, December 12th, sixth grade dear graduation. I was supposed to make sure, got all, and then Friday, December 13th, we're going to have, we're going to be doing the WeCan crew drive with the school. And then also on Friday, we'll be doing Care 11 Toys for Tots with Care 11, so. Other than that, just, we ask that remind the community to get their vehicles off the streets from 2:00 to 6:00. We're hanging by a thread here. We're pretty sure we're going to get hit with some snow here shortly, and that, the public works, we usually come out and we just tag and toe if we can't get the owners, because we have to get them out of the way for them to plow through. So that was one thing. And then I've been telling you guys, we got a new officer starting. I have her with me tonight. So if you guys might like her to come up and introduce herself to you.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Abby. I did almost five years with the St. Paul Police Department, left there to go back and finish my bachelor's in criminal justice, which I just finished. And I wasn't entirely sure that I want to go back into law enforcement, because as you know, it's been a little bit rough. But ultimately, a current employee referred me. I have really, really good things to say about the community and the police department in general. So here I am, I'm back, and I'm excited to be back.
Cool.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Good. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, number seven, we got a review and discussion with Lake Minnetonka Flats LLC Development team regarding Townhome project at 2400, 2420 Commerce Boulevard. And Sarah, are you going to do this one, or Jesse? No? You don't? Okay. At least kick it off then?
Sure.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, staff and guests. I'm Sarah Smith. I'm the planner with the city. I'm also the development director, but just a humble planner. We have the folks from the Lake Minnetonka Flats Development Team with us this evening. As you recall, we did amend the agenda to add a third item related to an amendment to the early start, but they are here to talk about two things. Primarily, one, a condition that's in the resolution that approved the conditional use permit for the PUD related to the applicant providing six visitor parking spaces by recorded agreement. Additionally, they've brought their design team with them this evening, and they want to provide the council staff and guests with an update to the development of their architecture as they've gone through final design. And so they've got some really exciting graphics to share with members of the council and the folks that are with us in the audience. So with that, I think Jim Ghulie's here, and I think Dan Schaefer from Lake Minnetonka Flats team is here in addition to a couple of their architects. So with that.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jim, you want to come up? And I guess let's talk about A first.
Parking?
Yeah, condition.
Sure. Thanks, Sarah, mayor, council. It's good to see everyone again. As you may have seen, we were able to get somewhat started on the project, and we're here to update you on sort of where we're at on parking and sort of just some architectural changes. Let me just make this quick. We are here, for this part, requesting an agreement with the city to basically allow six visitor parking spaces in the public ramp. We thought we had an agreement with Gillespie Center for these six spaces, and when their board took that up for consideration, they elected not to do that, which is totally within their, you know, power to do that. They just didn't feel it was for their long-term, you know, parking was something that would work. So we've really locked in on the public ramp as an option. It's within the required radius that the development agreement required. And so we're here looking to resolve that requirement through the public ramp, which does allow overnight parking, which really would only come up in our project during the winter between, I think, at the hours of 10:00 and 6:00 in the morning.
Two and six.
Two and six in the morning. So there's a very narrow window where we wouldn't be able to park on Commerce. So the parking garage, we felt, was a great solution for that. So I'm here for any questions, but.
Does council have any questions for you?
Well, it looks like you've exhausted your hope. What is that, what is your anticipated price point for each, you know, for each home?
So we're still getting bids back. It's probably, I'm going to say at this point, because I, we don't have a number yet. I would just take this with a grain of salt. It's going to be north of a million, but that comes with a dock. So that would be a good goal.
I still give you five star, I'd give you five stars except for the fact that there's, you know, at that price point particularly, no onsite parking. And I'm hoping that, you know, you're still going to be working diligently at trying to take care of that with any surrounding properties that may go up for sale.
We are, we are. We're definitely in conversations to do that. But based on timing to continue where we are right now, this seemed like the best solution for us. You know, there, again, we, we do feel that the street parking for a majority of the year is adequate. There are at least 10 or 12 spaces directly in front of our property. So in the limited cases where it's either overnight in the winter between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning, where a visitor who would be spending the night would have to use the garage. Depending on how these homeowners are, you know, if they only have one vehicle, there's another space in the garage for a visitor. It just really depends. We don't know what everyone's situation's going to be, but we'd certainly like to address it, you know, in a adjoining property if possible.
Any other questions?
No, I mean, since it's for, like, he was, you know, like you were saying, a part of the night for part of the year. I don't really foresee that being a problem, but. I don't have any questions, I guess.
So with this A, attorney, what are we, what's our next steps with?
Well.
Just the motion, or?
Yeah, well, as you know, or as you may know that, there's a, there's a condition, I was getting to it right now. There's a condition in the resolution of approval that, let me get to the language here, that the applicants provide six visitor parking spaces either onsite or through a recorded parking agreement on adjacent property within 0.25 miles of development. My understanding is that the parking ramp is within that radius. And it would meet the intent, because it has more than ample space for the parking. I would highly dissuade the council from requiring an agreement that's recorded. And in fact, I don't think there's a need for an agreement because they can use it just like anybody else in the public with the same restrictions and rights. So my, the thought is, is that since this appears to meet the intent of that condition, if the council is okay with, at this point, with disregarding, disregarding the need for a recorded or written agreement on it and allowing to use it, just similar to any other anybody else in the public, that can be, that can be done to help them move forward. There's, I don't, we don't need a formal action, just, just a consensus from the council would be enough.
Okay. And then what's his next step after that?
Well, his, yeah, his, his next step would be, if he has a desire to clean up the condition, there's, as of right now, city code has a process that has to go through an application, and he would just need to talk to Sarah, and he can work through that.
Okay. All right, so consensus, so.
So short, short story long, it's like removing the condition.
It, it's not an official removal, but it's an understanding that this meets the intent, and we're not, the city's not going to move forward with seeking an agreement since it's a, it's a public facility. That can be used by them, by anybody in the public in the same manner. And so we'd just be looking for consensus. Is it, does it, basically, is it an acceptable approach?
So again, and then remember, we're not doing a contract with him and, you know, holding those six spots. Anybody can park there, any, any city, any, any person for 24 hours. You got to go and move your car every 24 hours.
I mean, this kind of goes back to before when we were deciding, like, I wasn't necessarily a proponent of, like, requiring that additional parking. We were kind of like divided on what we thought was needed or not.
Well, remember, city code says they don't need the six. This was a planning add-on, basically, so.
But I do want to caution, because before you guys were on, when Paul and I were senior members here, it's senior members here, we have, with many groups having events, have said, use our parking lot, our garage. And especially the Phillips Island Town Hall for their event parking, the, you know, the ramp is their event parking space, designated space per our agreement with them. I'm not sure if that's in writing. Do you remember, Paula? I know that we talked about it. And I don't know if it was codified.
Right now, I don't remember. I've got something else I want to ask Sarah though.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to remind us that we need to think about, you know, we can keep promising it to a lot of groups. What happens when they have multiple uses on the same day?
So remember, this is.
If we oversubscribed.
The intent of this is public, it's public. Anybody could use it. I could go park my car there if I want. You could, you know, anybody could. If you live in Maple Grove, you could do it too. I mean, if it's full, then your people are going to have to find a different spot, you know.
I think what Councilman Reap was saying too is what they were talking about with the island is like, to Mr. Lansman's point, you know, stay away from those agreements. Yeah.
And the other thing too is I didn't ever get to the point of looking into it, but based on how the project for the ramp was funded, we may not be able to actually have some formal agreement or at least charge, you know, for it too.
Right.
As part of the tip.
But again, I haven't looked into that, but I remember, I see Paula shaking her head up and down, so.
Okay. So again, do we have consensus?
Paula had something she wanted to say.
Do you have something for this?
First of all, does our ordinance say that we're supposed to have those? Our ordinance does not say that they're required.
He doesn't need the six. No.
Our ordinance doesn't say that. Second thing is, it's, Sarah, just correct my brain. Seems to me we had another buyer of a building in Mound. They wanted to buy the building and redo it and all this stuff, but they kind of got the door slammed in their face, my recollection is, because they didn't have enough parking. And so they brought up the parking in the ramp, which would be closer proximity to this commercial building than this property going in to the ramp. Do you recall that? I got a call on it. So do you remember that?
I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
It was, they're looking at doing like a wedding venue?
Yes.
And then their thought was, could we just shuttle back and forth to the?
Correct.
To the ramp?
Yeah.
And again, I think they can, but with not an agreement.
Okay.
Like, again, we're talking, we're not doing an agreement with them.
Right. We're not doing an agreement. We're not charging money because it's funded differently and stuff like that.
But we can't do that, but if they wanted to technically, no, they needed that for the whole thing to work out because they only had, I think it's four or five parking spots.
They had 15, but it wasn't anywhere near enough for any back.
I think they only got like four in the back.
I think they secured 15.
Okay. With the neighbors or something?
Yeah. They still weren't anywhere close to.
But.
But remember, if you're having weddings, I mean, that's a lot of cars. That's a different situation.
But somebody could be having a party there too at the flats and just tell them, just go down there and park. It's public. Go ahead. And I understand that. But what I'm disturbed at is that a new business coming to our town, in my opinion, got the door slammed in their face and said, no, we're not going to allow that. It's not this group.
I don't know what led to it not going through, but.
Yeah.
I can't remember if I talked to that person or if I just heard about it.
Well, I, it's too bad. We're doing it now and we didn't do it then. But if it's not in the ordinance, they have to have so many parking spaces, like some of the other parts, the one over there by the shopping center that was going to come in and, yeah. I, my personal opinion is, is that we should either change it or be consistent in who we say it's okay to, that's my opinion.
So I think when we originally voted this through, that did come up where we're like, you know, we have, the planning commission said, we want six spots, right? But that's not in code. You don't have to have six spots. Remember, each unit's going to have two garage parking spots on their own, plus they can park in front pretty much all day except for rush hour and then.
Two to.
Two to.
Six.
Well, actually.
It's plowing.
That's only in the winter, right?
Yeah.
So really, it's just rush hour that they can't park in front of there, so.
I think it would be good for us to have our attorney look at the documents for the parking ramp so that we're clear as to how it was funded and its use. And then we can be consistent with that use going forward in case we get any other request or expressions of using that for parking.
Well, again, my issue with this, and it's beautiful, you know, you've gone to great lengths to design this beautifully, both from the street view and the lake view. And I just, I just feel that relying on the street for a beautiful, you know, 12 plaques or whatever you are referring to it as, I just don't think enough thought went into, you know, when you initially had your two onsite parking spots for safety, for the convenience of guests, I just feel like you dropped the ball there. But it's a five star. I mean, it's beautiful. And I just feel that you went to so much effort to design this on a challenging, you know, amount of property, that I would have liked to have seen more effort be put into guest parking.
Right.
And I've made that pretty clear every time.
You have.
But it's beautiful.
Well, thank you.
There's no question.
We continue to pursue other options that would be much closer. I mean, from a timing standpoint, because this situation is very much tied to what we can continue to build. And so resolving this now would be much better for us. Now, is there a better long-term solution? We're working on that, but, you know, we don't, I can't tonight tell you that we have that figured out. But I don't disagree with you.
Well, I appreciate the fact that, you know, it hasn't left your radar.
Yeah.
That that's an important, and I think it's for the people who purchase this property as well. But for the sake of saying, yep, there's six spots, there's six spots around the corner on the old Auditor's Road that people can park into, so.
Yep.
I'm in agreement of this temporary solution.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so is that a yes for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Or Paula?
I'll go on.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, everybody's yes, so.
Thank you. Okay. Then we'll work with staff to amend that, whatever the process is that you recommend.
Yeah, and I'll say that with regard, we talked about this, but with regard to the project itself, this meets that requirement and then talk to staff and then you can work through the application and the timing, the process will.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, this wouldn't slow anything down based on that going back through the process? We can still move forward?
Correct. The interpretation from the council right now is that you met the intent.
Okay.
And you can move forward, but there's some possible cleanup.
Yep.
That would need to be done.
Understand. Great. Thank you.
So this item itself won't hold it up.
Good. Appreciate that.
Okay, so B, the fun part.
B, yeah.
All right. So can you show us what it looks like now?
Well, you have the more qualified people talk about B.
Oh, okay. We got to.
Thank you.
Can we turn the lights down a little? So.
Should we pass it around?
No, I.
Yeah, thank you for this. I just have a quick.
Thank you.
All right. Can you give us your name?
Dan Schaefer with SW Builders.
Okay.
Council and Mayor, we're here excited to show the, I guess, latest and greatest iteration of Lake Minnetonka Flats.
Nice.
So Kyle Sonner, the architect, he'll kind of walk through some of the details.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. Good evening. Thanks for having me here today. I'm really excited to share what we've been working on. I know there's been some updates and just continual development from what you've probably seen last. And just as a piece of that, we've done everything we can to respect and honor what you've seen up until this point. And then just as the design process continues, we get into the code, we get into, you know, inch by inch designing every piece of this. And so there's been some updates and even as part of the context here in this parking conversation, it's a tight site. And so every square foot of this site has been a challenge, both from the lakeside rules on height restrictions and trying to get that parking underneath these buildings just to accommodate what is required by code as the two lots per unit. So as a bit of a design challenge, it's certainly been a unique site and we're not trying to, we're trying to leave every possibility in terms of how do we accommodate that parking and concerns around that as explored. So effort has been going into this on our end, definitely to try to accommodate that. But just generally speaking, we have, some of the updates that have been going on are sometimes behind the scenes on interior circulation and how do you get a accessible entry and a double backed ramp so that someone can access the public space for accessibility and for the, those who are on the second floors have access to the elevator and things like that have required us to widen the front gable. In the bottom left corner, you see a little diagram there. That was the previously approved, presented masting of the building. We've had to, you know, adjust to get this sort of ramp in the building. Part of that was because we needed to get the cars down into a parking lot below the building while also respecting a 35-foot height limit. And we had to kind of switch the difference here. And so you have to kind of build up, which then creates a challenge for ramping. So we want to have a car going down underneath the garage without creating too steep of a slope that creates any sort of risk or danger to the road and visibility. We want to have a gentle ramp down while also providing a gentle ramp up so people in a wheelchair can access the front door to this building. So there's a lot going behind the scenes in terms of code compliance, getting accessibility and from the health and safety perspective, just being able to provide egress from this building in such a tight thing, means we've got very limited footprints as well as the kind of like, the county road that we're working on has the setback that we can't work beyond in terms of ramping. So we're tight in a really narrow slot. But if you want to keep going on, I'll talk a little bit just about the general development is, you know, it's a transitional style, which we felt like is a timeless, it's sort of a Tudor style that we're, feel like is a timeless style that has some contemporary features as well as pays a little homage, especially as you go down to kind of the lakeside to this sort of, you know, city of Mounds, the lake environment here. We're trying to just celebrate the fact that these are lakeside homes. These will be condo type buildings where they can really take advantage of that beautiful sort of wetland in the backyard with a boardwalk that will connect to the units, the slips for their boats. But in that sense, we're looking at verandas and what kind of makes a coastal or a wetland, like an architectural language that respects that sort of personality and sense of place that is present in Mounds. So we've incorporated these verandas and very, you know, breezy spaces so that those, even the garages have a sense of openness and, you know, louvered passageways that can feel airy and open. And you can see a view here looking kind of at the development from the lakeside. And then if you just continue down here, again, this is from the canal looking back. It's three similar structures that are basically identical. One of them is mirrored, but that would be the lakeside view from the canal. You can kind of see the verandas in there. And then again, in this, we have the sort of flat units. There's these two flats stacked on the left, two flats stacked on the right with the sort of central common area that will be where the circulation elevators held. And then on that lower level are where we have some louvered openings to what is the pass-through where the garages are provided. Again, this is openness connected nature. On the lakeside, you can really see just how close we are to the road and we are having to accommodate a kind of a double switchback ramp, which takes up a lot of space. And to do that is where we're finding limits on how do you pull in these other additional spaces? And it's a challenge. And so just trying to get that ramp in there really limits what we have to work with in terms of the front yard and setbacks requirements from the county. Yeah, again, just kind of trying to create something that feels timeless and elevated, but also kind of pays a little respect to the coastal style or, you know, lakefront properties that you'd see. We're also trying to not just have a bunch of hardscaping in the front of these, but actually soften with some landscaping and, you know, plantings that creates a more walkable, you know, primary front yard access and creates a boulevard that feels very pedestrian oriented and, you know, softened the landscaping, so it's just not a bunch of concrete. Again, some of the way we play with just the masting here, so it's not a, you know, it's a building here. How do we take this monolithic building and soften it so that to the eye, it looks like there's dimension and depth and layers and it adds a, you know, a sense of texture, which is things like the pergolas here, the shadows, the material transitions, even the front kind of primary entry here has got a projected bay window, which will kind of become a central clear sense of entry focal point, kind of glows like a lantern right there, creates a clear place to enter the building. This view kind of captures the larger bird's eye view of the full, you know, the canal where the connection to the, you know, the slips are for the boats. And yeah, again, you can kind of see it at night here as it glows next to the water. To give you an idea of just the elevated sort of open living, we're trying to take these flats, but also really connect them to the lake. So we made it priority, kind of are holding this great opening and veranda space, that sort of outdoor living, the connection to nature, the things that people love about living in this area that we can celebrate. That door and this sort of outdoor living patio veranda space in each unit. Looking back, we're trying to keep some of the materials warm and just very approachable.
What was the square footage on the units again?
Units, there's a couple different, there's two different unit sizes. We've got about a 2,000 square foot unit on the larger one and an 1,800 on the second one. And so there's two of each of those per building. It's like 20, it's closer to 2,100 and I think 1,800.
And Dan, Iris is going to let you do the boardwalk?
Yeah, that's been a, that's been a big, a big process to get here. I mean, there's been, I guess, a number of people have looked at this land and should go through that process with the, I'll let Dan speak to this.
So we're, the boardwalk's been approved already. We're doing some final modifications.
Oh, great.
Right now.
But it'd just be to your property, it won't extend down to the other properties on Lost Lake, will it?
It will leave our property down to the slips and back. They wouldn't allow any connection to any of the other houses.
Yeah. Okay.
And then here's just a, you know, it's a pretty simple palette and I think simple looks good for a reason. Ages well, you know, and so these are just some of the materials that will be part of it. In terms of this, the simple light and dark composition, but then really trying to take the emphasis onto the landscaping and the, you know, the environment we're in and let that be the real star of the show. So I believe that's all we got right now. Any questions?
All right. Does Council have any other questions?
It looks amazing.
It looks amazing and, you know, Lost Lake is really the gem of this town. It is the most beautiful site in the city. But I also know that the businesses on the same side of the street that was facing sun at night and the evening, it's pretty strong. So are you going to have enough of a overhang on those windows for your residents? Because if you look at, especially like the nail shop and the barber shop, they close their windows, they have window closings because the sun's so intense coming in their windows.
There's 12 feet of coverage on the terraces back to the main, you know, exterior envelope of the building.
You're talking about, that's the east side?
Yeah.
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 So the west side, when the sun goes down.
Yeah, when the sun, but even during the day, it's pretty intense on those businesses.
Yeah. Well, there'll be shades included with that. And some of the other features we've added is on commerce side and the return sides are all triple plane, triple pane windows.
Yeah, that'd be good.
As well, so. We haven't missed much.
All right. Well, thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Yeah, great, great job.
We want to say, you know, we appreciate you guys looking at the amendment for the early start.
Yeah.
That's going to help tremendously, so.
And keep in mind, we do want to get a bike path that will go in front of your development on commerce. Took it to the Andrew Sisters.
It's called the sidewalk. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. See, we got a resolution and this is the one that is handed out to you. Unless I'm wrong, basically this is just adding sewer water, right?
Utilities and utility related work on the property.
Yeah.
The current early start also requires that in addition to any local permitting for Mound, they also have to possess or be in possession of any agency permitting that would accompany any related utility work.
Okay. So this is just amending our original resolution?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Besides that, all other terms and conditions within the early start agreement will remain full force in effect.
Okay. So does Council have any questions on this? Okay, if I'm hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
The resolution.
Resolution. It's the second page there. Someone wants to read it.
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution approving First Amendment to Lake Minnetonka Flats early start agreement.
Okay, we got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you again, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. All right, number eight. We got 2025 final budget and levy discussion slash approval. We've got maybe coming up.
All right. Mayor and Council, item one is the 2025 fee schedule. I just realized that the subject on the memo is not entirely correct. So just a quick background, every year, the city is required to pass a fee schedule. This is reviewed on an annual basis by staff. This is reviewed on an annual basis by staff. So staff did, and then city council adopts, um, the fee schedule as part of its 2025 budget process. So this has been, any changes that are reflected in the fee schedule are in line with the long-term financial plan and utility rate study. And then they're also in line with other recommended changes, um, to kind of get, like, so we have some meter changes, like our parts for meters, those change in price every year, so those are reflected as well. So at the, um, previous October meeting, the city council already passed the 2025 utility rates because we needed to get a message out to multifamily properties on those changes because it, uh, it changes their structure more significantly. And so that part of the, the fee schedule has already been passed. In your packet, strikes indicate for the, uh, within the resolution for the fee schedule, removal of information and then underlines indicate addition of information. So after the fee schedule is passed, fees will go into effect January 2025 and effective the first billing cycle for utility bills. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution that approves the 2025 fee schedule. So within your packet is the resolution adopting that with the strike information and underlying additions. Uh, it also includes, um, supplemental information on the fire department changes and again, water meter, uh, hardware.
Okay, so before we go farther on that, do we want to do the other, talk about them and then let the public talk?
Um, I do have the next schedule, uh, that'll kind of be the next part. I'll do the, more of the budget and, um, I mean, I can go into that right now.
Yeah, I think let's do that and then let's, let's, let's open it up to the public.
We can talk about it all at the same time.
And then we'll come back and go through each of them.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
I'm not sure if, I think this is the right time. In all your fee schedules?
Yep.
I, I'm not seeing the new business watercraft rental license included in this, or is that part of the peddlers and solicitors? On 3146, you've got a one-year, $200 payment for peddlers and solicitors?
Okay, yep, so that was an oversight, so we will have to add that.
And that would be for, for the year, the business watercraft rental license is $200 annually.
Yep.
With the rest, you know, with the amendments that follow it, that they have to make sure to pass before it being granted the license.
Yep.
So assuming we pass that, we can just add that as a condition, right?
Yeah, you can, a motion to approve adding on.
Okay.
And that's something that would add, be added to the fee schedule like permanently, like every year, right?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think when we passed it, it got passed as a separate item and we forgot to put it in, incorporate it in this schedule. So we will do that this time.
Okay, so now we're going to go B. Do you want to talk about that?
Yes, so, uh, this is, uh, request to approve resolution approving the 2025 general fund budget and levy. So in front of you this evening is the 2025 final budget and levy proposals for approval. As you know, the preliminary budget and levy was passed in September, at the September meeting, and that information was sent to Hennepin County. The past budget, uh, or the previous, or the preliminary budget levy increase was passed and one that reflected a 6% increase. Since the passage of that preliminary levy, property owners have received their 2025 preliminary tax statements. Hennepin County has released the 2025 preliminary tax rates for jurisdictions in the county. And staff continue to finalize contracts and other budget related items. The city council is now at the point in the budget process where it needs to approve the final budget and levy before the December 27th deadline. So at this time, um, I'll go into a little bit more detail, but the finance committee and staff are recommending that the 2025 final levy and budget remain at 6%. Again, just a reminder, the final budget and levy cannot exceed that of the preliminary levy. Before the city council can take action on the final budget and levy though, the city must hold a truth and taxation meeting. This is a requirement of the budget process and is required as a way to enhance public participation in the property tax system. It's a means of to increase transparency in the process and provide education to property owners on how their property taxes are determined and to offer feedback. So property owners, after my presentation, will, if they're here tonight, will be allowed to come up and offer feedback. First, so as part of the truth and taxation requirement, I'm going to go over the overall annual timelines of events from different government agencies that go, that, uh, tie into the taxation process. So in January, property valuations are set by the county assessor. In March, property owners receive a valuation notice, uh, from the county assessor. And then it's in March and May of the year that the appeal process is available. The county holds an annual meeting here at city hall where residents are able to come and appeal any valuations or to ask questions. After that period, the valuations are finalized. In September, this is when the city council sets its preliminary budget and it's passed and sent to the county. That information, um, including all other jurisdictions that pass theirs, are included in a preliminary tax statement that's sent to property owners, uh, in November. And then in December, this is when each jurisdiction finalizes their, uh, final budget. And then that, that is the information that is included in on the final tax statements that are sent out. So I'm going to just go over quick some of the, this is just an example of the kind of parts of the property tax. So again, the City of Mound is one of the entities that's included and broken down on that tax statement. Some of the budget highlights for the City of Mound. So we completed a long-term financial plan and utility rate study this year. The City of Mound, uh, we saw a net percent valuation of 0.3%. So this is a huge difference, um, between the last few years where we saw huge increases, um, of 25.8% and 9.6%. And then the City of Mound had a negative one decrease in tax bill market value. So that plays a role in how taxes are calculated as well. The city, uh, in the budget process was notified that it will be, will see the elimination of its local government aid in 2025. That's about 1% of the city's, that was about 1% of the city's tax levy in 2024. The city increased its franchise fees in 2024 to diversify its revenue sources moving forward. With that discussion, it was because most properties in the city rely on city services, but not all pay, uh, city taxes. And so as a way to get some of those, um, some revenue from those properties that don't pay property tax to pay for, to fund some of those services. And then continued focus on the maintenance of the capital reserve funds that, that was adopted as a priority in 2028. The goal there is to rely less on issuing debt, which comes with at times high interest, and to reduce the reliance on property assessments, um, for funding, as a funding source, specifically for street projects. I'm not going to go into too much detail about this, but again, the long-term financial planning utility rate study, those documents brought together the long-term goals and priorities of this city as it relates to preserving current, uh, city operations and service levels. It also makes sure that city assets are maintained accordingly to the, to extend the life as long as possible and to use these assets as long as possible before needing to be replaced. It's important to note though, as a reminder, that these documents are guiding documents as they are based on assumptions of what could occur. And so adjustments are common and every budget year needs to take that into consideration. These plans were taken into consideration during the, for the preliminary and final budget and levy and fee schedules. So jumping back to the presentation, again, a quick overview of general fund. So this is the fund that covers operating, the operating division of the city and provides basic city services such as police and fire, street and park maintenance, planning and zoning, and other administrative duties. The services provided within this fund are paid through different revenue sources such as license fees, permits fees, intergovernmental revenue, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, franchise fees and property taxes. So essentially the city estimates, um, what it thinks it'll bring in for revenue for all other revenue sources, not including property taxes. And then the remainder is covered by property taxes. So, uh, again, significant revenue changes for 2025. We're losing our local government aid on the corner there, the bottom corner. You can see what it used to be. In 2020, it was about 402,000. Now we are, we have gradually decreased to zero. We also had a one-time public safety grant in 2024. We will also not see that again in 2025. So this slide just shows kind of the shift that we're losing that revenue, intergovernmental revenue in 2025. And so it just kind of shows how the pie is shifting with those revenue sources. Expenditure changes, so starting in a significant change, Hennepin County will start covering the cost of property assess, the city, the county assessor. So the county and city share an assessor right now and that will, they decided that they're going to cover that entire cost. It was a, a budget, it was an expense of 142,000 in 2024. It'll go down to zero for 2025, which is, which is big for the city to not have that expenditure. So again, the part of the general fund that's covered by, uh, part of it's covered by property taxes. Uh, other drivers include capital investments and revenues, again, planning for the future, and then debt payments that we've issued in the past to pay for projects. Again, this is just another slide regarding that. This is just a description of how we get to that final number. So again, we calculate all of our projected revenues, subtract it from what we think our expenditures are going to be, and then that's how we get the general fund property tax. We also, as part of our long-term financial plan, uh, look at all of the needs as far as streets, buildings, vehicles, parks, maintenance and replacement costs. And we schedule when those need to be maintained and replaced over time. And then we also, and then this is a slide that shows, um, next year's planned capital expenditures in that area, and then our debt payments. So you do see our debt, uh, our debt payments going down significantly. But again, as part of this plan is we're shifting more into capital, trying to rely on debt less. And so that's again, part of the process of, of trying to balance between paying cash and, and issuing more debt. And then this just brings together, um, again, the, the drivers of property tax and where they're coming from. Other notable information, this slide just provides you with the change in the total tax levy, predicted tax rate, um, just other important drivers that go into the, uh, the entire budget process and calculation. One thing I wanted to note, so again, a lot of, a lot of work has gone into creating the documents in 2024 to provide long-term financial outlook. For the city, assumptions included that the city would continue to operate at the current level of services while maintaining and replacing its current assets in a way that kept the tax levy as steady as possible over the next 10 years, while eliminating the use of special property assessments as a financial tool. So we've done that in the past for reconstruction projects. So again, the goal is keeping operations steady, keeping, maintaining our assets over time while, um, keeping the tax levy steady for the next 10 years. So with that, the finance committee and staff are recommending that the final budget and levy be maintained at 6% and to approve the resolutions as shown in the packet reflecting that. And again, that, that is in line with the long-term financial plan and kind of keeps things where we need to be going as far as that, uh, our long-term goals. One thing I want to state too, because I know there's, there are like, there are some residents, I think, in the audience. So one thing about property values that I want to note before I'm done, um, the cities, the cities, uh, property values, um, per the Hennepin County did reflect that a lot of the non-lake properties stayed pretty flat or the value went down a little bit. But a lot of the properties on the lake continue to go up in value. And so that is a, um, a big part of why some properties did see a shift in their taxes as far as an increase. Another factor was the state of Minnesota, uh, changed its algorithm for homestead credit. And so more properties within a certain value are getting a homestead credit, so their taxes are kind of shifting down because the valuation that is calculated for their taxes is shifting them down to pay less taxes, but then it's kind of pushing things onto those higher value properties. I don't have that. So I just wanted to share that as well, that's from a meeting that we had with the county assessor. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I know, um, this is a period where we invite other residents up to, to provide comment, but, um, if you have any questions, I'm available and, uh...
Does council have any questions for Maggie before?
Well, I want to thank Maggie and Noah and the budget committee and Jesse for working so hard to get us to going in the right direction. It's taken a little while to get there, but we're heading in the right direction. So thank you for all your hard work.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, thanks. Okay, I'm going to open up the public meeting. If you want to come up and talk, talk to us, come on up and give us your name, address, and try to keep it to three.
I'm Tom Scramstead, 2968 Pelican Point Circle. And I've lived in Mound for about eight years and I keep track of my property value and my taxes. And my taxes have gone up in eight years 125%. And, uh, my taxes, according to my Hennepin County statement, this year actual compared to the plan goes up 25%, not 6%, 25%. So it's hard to, uh, you know, living on fixed income. I just want you to know it's been hard to do this and still live here. So thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Have, have you looked specifically at where all the taxes are happening for the property increase? Because most of it isn't Mound.
Well, it, right, most of it isn't, but Mound is 25%, not 6%.
I can speak to that for just a second, I think, to your point. So like, we had this dollar bill graphic. It was like, here's your property taxes for like your statement that you get.
Yeah.
And I think so you have state, city, county, and schools.
Yep.
And the, I think last year, the city portion or Mound, it was like 18% of our property tax bill was the city, 40% was like the schools. So the 20% of our property, all of our property tax bills, that is, the City of Mound is like probably about 20% of your overall. You know, so, so that 20% that is the City of Mound is what's going up 6%.
So I think his actual statement, his statement went up 25%.
So.
On the city alone.
Yeah, okay.
My, my overall tax is about 16% this year to next year.
The whole statement?
The whole thing, yeah, the Hennepin, schools and Hennepin County and everything. And, uh, in the Mound part was 25%, so.
So one thing you can do, which I've been doing for, I've had other people reach out, is, um, I can look up yours property individually. I don't know if you called me. I know there were some other people on Pelican that did. And I sent them an email explaining a little bit more how that number, why the numbers are, why our number is six and why yours is 25.
That would be nice to know.
Yeah, I, and, um, I, I think I have a card I can give you. Um, but it's, unfortunately, it's, it's a kind of a complicated balance between, um, you know, like I said, the, your valuation probably increased.
Sure, the valuation goes up, I, I get that.
Yeah, and then also a shift in the, the new law with homestead value. But if I give you my card, I think if you reach out to me, I can explain that a little bit more.
I'll come get one now.
Yeah.
There also is a special law for those of us 65 where you can get your taxes deferred and you only pay 3% of whatever your income is. But you have to weigh how... But you have to weigh how, how you feel about the deferment. Because basically, the deferment upon your death or moving out of the property would have to be repaid. So if you were leaving your property to heirs, they would get stuck with paying the deferred taxes. But it is, it is a vehicle, and a lot of seniors use it um to reduce their taxes.
Okay, thank you, Sherri.
One last thing to, um, I'll connect with the county commissioner too. And, you know, nothing, nothing's probably going to happen this year, obviously, but um we have two actually. And we have meetings randomly or a couple of times a year, but um, I mean, that's something that they got to know, that, you know, how they're valuing things affects us, right? Like unfortunately, we don't have a lot of say in that part of it.
I know that.
But, you know, I'll relay that on to our two commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, come on up and give us your name and address.
Joe Palasek, twenty-nine eighty-eight Pelican Point Circle. Neighbors with Tom and, yeah, I, the information tonight's been tremendously helpful and grateful for getting that information. My issue is specifically related to the estimate, the summary that I got said Mounds average was going to be six percent. Mine's twenty-five. And my, my concern is related, not just for now, my concern is for next year and the year after. And how are we going to be able to continue to live here? And is, is it realistic or not? And how do you, yeah, my, my concern is, is next year and beyond and how, what's being done to help manage this. One of the things that I've known has seen before too, sometimes there's caps to increases as far, as far as that it's, and it's tiered in there over time going forward. Is that something that was considered? Is it something that's considered going forward? Twenty-five percent is just, it's just crazy.
Right. And do we know, this comes from the county, right? Or does the state have rules that go down to the county?
They work together.
Okay.
So it's, the county, I, I don't, I don't know.
Does the state pass laws though that the county has to abide by?
Yeah.
And how they evaluate? So again, not to total punt this, but um I know this last election season was all about affordability.
Mm-hmm.
Remember, that was the, the big word, right? I mean, obviously, that's not, you know, your statement's a lot different than maybe, you know, mine or probably all of ours, really.
Yep.
Um, you have a beautiful neighborhood.
Yes, absolutely.
I love it.
I totally agree. I love it as well.
But yes, that's tough when you get a twenty-five percent on just our portion alone. That's, I get, I agree. So um again, for the future, again, I'm going to pass that. I know Representative Myers, uh, we have a new senator now, um, Coleman, Coleman?
No.
What's her name?
Jo-.
Sorry, she's a new, Ann Johnson, Stewart. So.
She's an engineer.
I know Ann Johnson personally, so.
Good, well.
And I've reached and.
Did I, did I send you a phone?
Information, but having your card would be great.
Yeah.
So, yeah, she'll get you the information.
Yes, it's helpful, but it's, it's still.
Still doesn't help.
Six percent compared to twenty-five percent is just my modeling.
Right.
Yeah.
So again, we'll pass that along to hopefully the other people that can make a difference doing that, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thanks.
Very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, can you give us your name and address?
I'm Chester Yanek. I live at fifty-five twenty-five Bartlett Boulevard, about a mile from there.
Nice.
Um, I bought my house, an old house, eh, forty years old and renovated to accommodate my handicapped wife situation. I've lived in the Mound community for over forty-five years. And once I finished the renovation, and it worked very well, uh, the house is not identifiable to the house that should have been torn down. The tax assessment went from six thousand to twelve thousand dollars. In the last four years, it went from twelve thousand to nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars and or twenty-six point four percent in evaluation this twenty twenty-five. It's getting unaffordable. I'm eighty years old and I'm retired. And I love the Mound community. We move closely at the church and all that. Uh, something's got to be done to help, you know, residents in this community. Um, the mound tax portion of the total nineteen thousand is a little over thirty percent. Very unlike what I've heard tonight. I just wanted to say that to some people because I have gone to the Hennepin County mound assessor. He says, well, everything is going up, okay? And he went up this year four thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. I mean, come on, you know, sympathize with us a little. We love it here. We'll live here as long as we can.
Yeah.
Basically, why I came here.
Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, Maggie, can we get some of the statements so I can pass that along to who I just talked about?
Yes.
So when you reach out to these people, just have them maybe make a copy and sign it to us? So I'd like to pass that along and show specific examples.
Okay.
You can block out their names and stuff. Or name an address. Well, if you want to drop one off at City Hall, I'd love to see it.
I can look it up pretty easy.
Or you can, you can print them out.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to give examples to, to them, so.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any other? Nope, okay. All right, so let's go back to A, action on resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-five fee schedule. Does anybody have any questions on that? Want to talk about that? If not, um, if someone wants to make a resolution, go ahead.
Um, I would like to make a resolution.
Remember, we got to add the water craft.
Um, okay, so I'd like to make a resolution on agenda item eight A, adopting the twenty-twenty-five fee schedule with the addition of the water craft rental license line item.
Yeah, and.
As a permanent addition to the fee schedule.
Yeah, that should be enough, and that's enough direction for staff. Good. All right, got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, everybody say aye?
Aye.
Okay, uh, that passed. Okay, now B, we got approved resolution approving the twenty-twenty-five general fund budget in the amount of six million nine ten three eighty-two, setting the final levy at eight million two oh eight six ninety-four and approval of the final overall budget for twenty twenty-five. Um, does anybody want to talk about that quick?
I don't have anything um directly to, to that, but before we move on from um budget items, I just wanted to ask too, do we have like future communications coming up or our next newsletter? Is it too late to add? Um, like the graphics kind of of the property tax bill makeup?
Yeah, we could, when we do that, it'll probably be up the average value, right, Noah? So it'll reflect the average value home for the city of Mound. So it could create a visual, but I, we would have to note that it was, it's based on that, but.
Like, I know the, the folks that spoke tonight understand that, but it's a good refresher, I don't know, even just for when you see it.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, yeah, you know, it's not all Mound, you know?
So we, the, we'll be working on the newsletter. I think it'll go out the early Feb.
Uh, it'll go out, um.
Late Jan.
It has to be down in mid-January and goes out right before February.
Okay. Um, you just said all this, but I just want to say it a couple of times again. Um, you remember, we lost our local government aid. We're getting four hundred and two thousand in twenty twenty, and it went down to three thirteen, three thirteen. Twenty twenty-three is one sixty-eight. We got tw- uh seventy-four thousand this year, zero next year. So again, I am working with other elected people to see if we can get back on that list. But again, they calculate that at the state. It doesn't look good right now, but again, we're, we're pushing. Our, uh, we, we got public safety money last year. Was that four hundred something?
Yeah.
Four seventy?
Four hundred and fifty.
Four hundred and fifty.
Thousand or something like that.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
Um, again, that was a one-time deal. That was just, you know, from the state, but that, you know, went to turnout gear and, and um, you know, a lot of fire type stuff, so. But again, we're not getting that this year. Um, our water fund is four and a half million in the hole. Right?
Is it more now?
Uh, I think by the end of the year, it'll be a little higher than.
It's a good estimate.
Okay, around four and a half million in the hole. Again, part of why we were doing this long-term financial plan is to, let's try to rectify it and eventually, you know, by twenty-thirty-ish, get out of the hole. Um, the, we had forty-year inflation. I mean, that was four. Last time inflation was this bad. Um, we did, you know, obviously, a little bit higher last year. Um, but if you look at all the previous years, I mean, we do tr- really try to keep it pretty low for, you know, just covering kind of costs and stuff. Um, on the positive side, we did get this assessor money of a hundred forty-two thousand that we're not going to have to pay out of our pocket anymore, so that's good. Um, and again, just on the finance committee, you know, we spent a lot of time, um, you know, with the help of you guys, obviously, uh, making sure that we're, you know, we have a game plan to kind of get out of where we're at right now.
Yeah, I think that we, I think we, we can pride ourselves in that we did do the due diligence work on getting a good budget and working ourselves out of debt. What we didn't do is we didn't look at who lives here. We didn't look at the demographics and the income of people who live here. And, you know, sort of vaguely, everyone says, well, close to fifty percent of our residents are over fifty-five. That means they're all on fixed income. I'm one of them, you know? And so, so this good plan that we did, which we can be proud of, didn't really take into consideration the implications on people who've owned homes for thirty and forty years getting these increases that they've spoken about tonight, and how do we resolve that? So I think as we move forward and look to solutions and suggestions, we need to be looking at how do we match up our, our, our duty as, you know, elected officials of a city to retire debt and get the city steady? But what is our obligation to our residents, given their, you know, their long tenure in our community and income situations?
So, yeah, going forward, we're, you know, assuming you're on that next year, we'll definitely.
Well, all of us can work on it.
Well, yeah, you work on it too.
Yeah, and I've always said we need an economic development plan. We need to figure out some way to generate economic development in this town to take some of the tax burden off of homeowners.
Um, the other thing, just looking at, you know, I, I brought my own bill that I got, but um, there's what, forty-five cities in Hennepin County, if I counted right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, thirty-five out of forty-five have a higher increase. And again, I'm not talking about your twenty-five percent, but I'm talking the six percent that we're looking at today. Um, thirty-five out of forty-five has, have a higher number. And eighteen percent, or eighteen cities out of forty-five had a double-digit increase. So, you know, again, we're sticking to six. You know, our, our neighbors around the corner did double digits. I mean, we're, the finance committee, we said, let's, let's do what we have to do. Let's follow the plan. You know, let's, but let's also not sock it to, I mean, I'm looking at some of these numbers, I'm like, holy cow, Greenfield twenty-two percent. Right. Um, you know, everybody got mailed this, right?
Kind of like us in population size, too.
Well, and again.
It's a little smaller.
Everybody got mailed this, so you can kind of look through it, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think we did a pretty good job staying, well, first of all, sticking to the plan, but also,
Yeah.
you know, staying as low as we can.
I'm, I'm not debating that. I'm saying I think we agreed to that. I'm just saying that we didn't look at the other side of that, which are the residents and where they're at.
Yeah, and again, I'm going to try to work more with what's that answer and, and how do we get?
Mm-hmm.
Again, if it's more of a county thing or, or if it's coming out from the state, we need to figure out where, you know, where it's coming from. Because again, we just kind of get handed this, you know, we, we work on our portion of it, but it, it just.
And we don't control factors because, I mean, I know in my situation, my taxes went up, and then my insurance doubled. And I had to call my insurance company and say, what the heck?
Right.
You know, and a lot of people have experienced it. I know in the condominium associations, their homeownership association fees, Pelican um Garden is probably facing this too. The insurance went up, and so that's impacted their HOA fees as well. So there's a lot of other things that are happening. Even though we're trying to do our part, you know, we still have to think about how can we um provide some relief or some new direction.
So we'll definitely look at that, yeah.
Part of the plan too was to get, you know, to get the water fund out of debt and to get the sewer fund, fund, sewer fund funded and then off of the tax levy. And then, you know, regardless of age and that stuff too, is avoiding the hiccups of the levy just going like twenty-two percent, four percent, fifteen, you know, it's like a, you know, it's, the plan looks, looks good.
It looks good, yeah.
And just so you know, out of forty-five, nobody had zero or negative as well, so.
Cold comfort.
Well, yeah. So again, I, we're sticking to the plan. We got a good, you know, a good way out of this, you know, it, was it twenty-thirty, right? We're looking pretty darn good. So, you know, assuming we keep to this plan for the next few years and adjust a little bit along the way. Yeah, I think, and again, it's up, you know, we did the hard work, unfortunately. Um, but here we are. So, anybody else have any comments on that? Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve C, the, the resolution, or sorry, B. Um, it's on page three two oh one.
A motion uh of a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-five final general fund budget in the amount of six million nine ten three eighty-two, setting the final level levy at eight million two zero eight and approving the final, final overall budget for twenty twenty-five.
All right, got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, that passes. Okay, now C, we, do we want to talk about this, Maggie, quick or?
Um, so this is, this resolution's also in line with the preliminary levy. So this is the HRA levy that helps cover the cost of the debt issuance for the parking ramp. And uh, um, yeah, so we're just recommending that it stays the same as the preliminary budget.
All right, so does anybody want to talk about that at all? Okay, so let's, on page three two oh six, if someone wants to make a resolution for that?
Um, does anybody have anything else or is it? Okay, um, I would like to make a res- a motion approving a resolution uh for the twenty-twenty-five HRA levy in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of defraying the costs of operation pursuant to the provisions of MSA four six nine of the HRA and for the city of Mound for the year twenty twenty-five.
All right, got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thanks again, Maggie, Noah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, number nine, we got accept twenty-twenty-five lift station feasibility study and authorize, authorize final plans and specifications.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Matt Bowman, city engineer. Um, so before, before you tonight, we have the feasibility study for the twenty-twenty-five lift station, which is located at the corner of, existing one is located at the corner of Dove um Lane and Woodlon Road. Um, yeah, so we've, background on the lift stations and the capital improvement plan, so we've started replacing them back in two thousand and seven. This year, we replaced the one at, on Sunset, and it's mostly done, so that's the reason for the asterisk on the twenty-sixth one. So there's a lot of parts that go to these, and some of them take longer to get than, than we would hope for. Um, and so lift stations are an integral part to the sewer system. Um, obviously, everything rolls downhill. We got to push it uphill so we can keep getting, push it down the line. Um, and yeah, so for the next four years, we, we have budgeted to replace, to replace or rehabilitate one of the last four lift stations. This would be number twenty-seven. Be the goal. Um, yeah, we've got the next slide there, Jesse. So existing station now is at the southeast corner of Woodlon and Dove. If it is any easement of a homeowner's property, uh, it's, it's a fairly tight site right now, and so we're, our goal was to look for a better spot to put it for this. Uh, so the, the costs that we reviewed and pulled together, so we replaced the underground structure. We, for this one, we are also going to plan to replace the force main likely. We, for this one, we are also gonna plan to replace the force main, likely pipe bursted again. We put, get new pumps, the city will purchase those, new control panel, SCADA, which is the communication piece between the station itself and the guys back at the shop. And then I get natural gas backup generator, which is very handy, especially three points power, kind of, there's a little iffy out there. We'll also do some site cleanups, and we're gonna relocate the station, I'll show you on the next slide, from, from where it is to a little bit farther south. So the costs that we anticipate, so estimated construction cost is just over six-hundred thousand, engineering's about a hundred and fifty thousand, and then city purchased items, so again, the panel, the pumps, the generators, about a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So in the yellow, this is our kind of project area, so again, the station's here right now, our feasibility, we landed it, we're gonna put it on city-owned property down here, about a block south. And then we will need to replace the sewer main going here, get it going the other direction, and then we'll replace the force main, install new force main going up Dove, and then pipe bursted along Woodland and out to where it goes on Finch. We did review going the other direction, but with the lake there, and then some of the heights of the, the other things we tie into, it just, it doesn't work, so. All right, so next steps would be to accept the report and authorize us to move into final design, plans and specifications, and then go up for bids. If during that, the final design piece, we come back to you and let you know that the, that the costs are looking like they're increasing more than we anticipate, otherwise, if they're in line with the CIP, then we would continue on and get that up for bid as quickly as we can, so we can get, get all those long-order pieces on schedule. So the rest of the schedule here, tonight, hopefully approve the study and move forward with plans and specs. March, ideally, we're opening bids, April, we award the contract, and then sometime summer, late summer, we start a construction, and our goal would be to wrap one up within the season we start it next year.
So does that mean Dove and Woodland Road would both be out of commission for a good part of the summer?
They, it'd generally usable, but yeah, we would have to close Woodland mostly, Dove would, um... Well, we'll have to kind of figure out the exact staging of where all the, the parts go. The abandonment of the old station isn't, uh, isn't all that extensive, it's, uh, it's more of the installing the new ones, so Dove will be, have the most going on and likely be closed for a while.
I understand there's like the benefit of moving the lift station to the city-owned property, too, and all of that, but like, how much? So we have to pay for the study to, to do that? I'm just like making this little mental pros and cons list, like, so replacing the lift station and just leaving it there?
There, um, there's really no room to, to do it there, so-
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, just a little more background, so the existing lift station is a metal can structure, and so those are prone to rotting out, and then we get a lot of inflow and infiltration, groundwater kind of seeping up into those. And so we installed brand-new concrete structures in a different spot that allows the existing one to keep working while we, while we do all this other work.
Okay. I forgot that component-
Yeah, that phasing of it is important to find a new location of it.
And I think Brian explained to us last time, like, I forgot about that component, so thanks for bringing that up, was that it was way more expensive to like rent the pumping equipment and-
Yeah, and then a lot more potential headache if something goes wrong.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is councilor any other questions? All right, we got on page three-two-four-five, got a resolution, someone wants to make a motion for that?
A motion for a resolution receiving report and authorizing preparation of plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the twenty-twenty-five lift station improvements project.
All right, we got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, number ten, fire partnership res, support resolution. So we had a workshop, uh, two weeks ago and talked about, um, the subject, and so at the end of it, I think most of us were on, on board with providing a resolution. As we keep going down the road here, um, you know, with what we do, you know, I'll try to keep the council up, up to date with, you know, what's happening. Uh, we had a fire meeting today, um, and we had two other chiefs from two other cities, one that they don't have a partnership, and then one that they do. And, um, just kind of interesting to kind of hear, you know, what their thoughts were, too. At the end of the day, you know, they're saying, this is the way, you know, that fire's going, is that you're gonna have to team up with other cities, you know, reduce costs, expenses, don't have two-ladder trucks, you know? It, it's, it's all that, but our issue is obviously some of that, but it's also, um, you know, Minnetrista is, you know, a big part of our contract, and they're growing a lot. And, um, you know, we, we need to be able to keep providing them, uh, you know, fire support as well. Now, if we keep doing the contract model and they decide not to, you know, renew with us, and then they do a, a deal with St. Bonnie down the road, that's gonna be, you know, kind of a negative for us long-term as one aspect to this whole thing. There's just so many positives. Uh, again, we heard this in our meeting. What we're doing here right now is just saying that we're still interested in coming to the table. This isn't like a final vote on, we're in, that'll come later. But this is, again, an expression of interest that, hey, we're still gonna, you know, come to the table and, and try to work through this, so. I don't know if anybody else has any other questions on that?
So it's just like a resolution of current support of what you guys have been working on?
Yeah.
Should there be included in this, you know, in our meeting, we talked about somehow trying to protect the mound fire perception and name? Should that be included somewhere in this, so we don't lose-
Yes.
-track of that?
In the final, when we actually, when this comes back like as a final product, and then we actually vote on it, that will be in there, for sure.
I, I just don't want to lose track of it along the way, even if we're showing general support for this.
Right.
I think that should be included.
I mean, I guess we could add it.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to add a sentence that just says something like, you know, mound has for over a hundred years, had its own strong and vital and, and sustainable fire department, and to make it really strong. And, um, you know, that we continue, even in this joint powers situation, to bring that to the table. Because we're bringing the most to the table in this anyway.
At this point, we are.
So no matter what, we're gonna keep the name, right?
Yeah.
Now, it might be mound fire department, part of the Lake Minnetonka, West Lake Minnetonka, you know, fire service, or whatever we want to call it, right? But, you know, you've been to a few meetings, right? We are not giving up our name. It's not gonna happen, so. And I won't vote on the final thing if that's in there. It's not even gonna get to us, because it's, we're gonna walk away before that ever happened, and no one else wants that to have happened either. The, the new mayor-elect for St. Bonnie showed up, so that was interesting to kind of hear. Didn't talk a lot, but, you know, interesting to hear kind of his, because he'll be, you know, he, him and the, his council's gonna have to vote on this next year. So we, um, they're kind of the same way. I think they're less worried about, when I say less, we're a hundred and ten, they might be a hundred and nine. But, but, but they're less probably, you know, on that than we are. But, you know, at the end of the day, we want to keep St. Bonnie, we want to keep Mound, keep those two names, but we are the, again, West Minnetonka, Hen County, whatever we want to call ourselves. And again, that'll be part of the, the final process as well. I really want to make sure that we give the firefighters really a lot of the final say on that, like, what do you guys want to be called? You're guys, you're doing it, we're not doing it, so. And they want to be part of the process, I mean, they are. There was, uh, three, yeah, three firefighters, obviously the chief, and then, um-
Andy.
Yep, so they were all there. A lot of the St. Bonnie firefighters don't kind of show up as much, because they're all working when we have these meetings, but a lot of them are more full-time jobs elsewhere, but, um, yeah, I mean, it's a room of, what? Twenty people, probably, fifteen, twenty people that we get in, and, uh, so again, this is, this is only just saying, we're still interested, we still want to come to the table, we, you know, at the end of the day, for, for me, for sure, the numbers better work out than, you know, the, the, the end product has to be really good before I even, we even bring it back to you guys to, to vote on, otherwise, we're not, you know, we're gonna walk away, so. And you're right, I mean, we're, we're the, kind of the biggest player of this whole thing.
We are the biggest player.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so again, we, we heard from one that just joined, so they cover five cities, so it's two, two, you know, old cities that got together and formed their own, you know, their own. But then we also heard one that was, uh, they were paid on call, and then they went to more duty crew and kind of paid call. And that was interesting to kind of hear that this whole paid-on call, nobody wants to volunteer to be a firefighter anymore, um, right? So, you know, you hear, you know, in the, back in the day, it was like, if you're not here twenty years, you don't get a pension, right? Nineteen and three sixty-four, you, we just worked nineteen years for no pension, twenty years. Now we've had to adjust it to ten, to say, hey, thanks for coming, right? To even get people to come in the door, right? And so, a lot of this is really future forecasting, what we're trying to do. How can we be viable for long-term, like, our numbers are great, we're great, we're not coming from a weak point, we're coming from a strong point, and that's, let's do this while we're strong. Now again, who brought this up? The chief brought this to us, so this isn't me or you, or, you know, we didn't come up with this idea. And this has been talked about for ten, twenty years, probably, so. Again, this is showing support of me and then whoever's on fire next year to keep going to those meetings and come up with a final project to bring back to us. Let's just say everything works out, probably six to eight months before we'd actually vote, like a final vote on that. I don't want to go through this and then all of a sudden, you know, six months, we put all this, I put a lot of time into this stuff. If, if you guys are just like, hey, this isn't, you know, like, again, the, the comment with the, the name, please, let's talk now, let's, let's get that out, because I want to, and we'll, we'll talk about this more when I go to the meetings, and I can kind of relay our, you know, our needs, but I think I kind of know what we want, but let's talk about it now.
I think it's important, you know, one of the things about mound and, um, you know, we're, we're a community that has a lot of pride, but we don't shout it a lot. And, um, we lost our high school, it was mound high school. And, and now, you know, I go on a tour with the mayor of Minnetrista, and all she can talk about is that it's their school, and I'm going to their school, it was right downtown here, on that corner.
Right.
You know, um-
Well, now we're losing the name mound out of it altogether, it's gonna be West Tonka.
Right.
Yeah, so we've got a, you know, this West Tonka thing wipes away history. And I think we just have to start standing firm.
Well, to go on that, I, I got an email from a resident and said, you know, we were approached about changing the school district name, and I said, no, and I don't know if any of you guys were approached, but-
Changing the school district?
The name, from mound, mound, West Tonka.
Oh, no.
So I, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't knowing any of you guys' meetings, so.
Yeah, see, Minnetrista's going for that, I think.
Yeah. Well, anyway, so any other thoughts on the, this?
We can just tell Minnetrista they're a suburb of mound. Or the central business district.
All right, any other? Okay. All right, so we got a resolution on page three-two-four-six, someone wants to make a motion for that?
I'd like to make a resolution supporting the formation of a fire joint powers agreement between the cities of Minnetrista, mound, St. Bonnie, Shorewood, and Spring Park.
We got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Okay, so now we're gonna go into closed session, uh, city manager review, we're gonna go back in the conference room. Do you have to say something?
Well, before, I would say that what we're looking for is a motion from the council to convene into a closed session under Minnesota statute, section thirteen D. point oh-five, for the city manager review.
Okay, so that's my motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? All right, that passed, we're gonna be back in a little bit. All right, we're back from our closed session for our city manager review. Do you have to say anything about it, or no?
Uh, no, we, this, the next meeting, you may have a little summary, but-
Okay, our next meeting, we'll have a summary on that. Uh, number twelve, we got comments and reports from council members. Councilmember Pugh?
Okay, so, I did my tour of the new city hall building, and there is no extra room.
Where is this?
In the city hall building, you, you kept saying, oh, there's all this room. There is a big room, which we can use for council, but, um, there are lots of bathrooms. There are some challenges with stairways, because some stairways, you can go up and across and down, so there's gonna be a lot of doors that have to have locks. Rooms that might have been considered vacant space are really used for storage, and so I think that there's a lot more to be considered about what's available there, and, and I remember the last time someone said, oh, there's lots of parking, there is no parking, the only parking is the parking on front of the building, so, um-
And here.
You know, I think that, I don't know if the rest of you have gone over and looked, but people should go and look and walk through the building and see there really is no extra space other than the meeting room. And, um, potentially, if the joint powers thing goes on with the fire, the fire department may need to take up more space than they already have.
It would be less, because we'd have a, a station in between St. Bonnie and here.
Well, uh, when I talk-
It's actually the, it's actually in the contract that we will design one eventually. So, anyway.
So, anyway, so there, there really is, um, limited space there. The, um, other thing was that, what else did I do? Did something else? I forgot, I'm gonna see my notes. Went on the tour. Oh, I, I went to the Gillespie Board Meeting, and, you know, they had their, their annual retreat, um, not retreat, um, what do you call it? Boutique this week, and they seem to be really moving in a positive way, getting more money in, they've got cash flow, RONDA's really doing an excellent job in terms of programs and stuff. They still, um, seem to have this desire to have the local governments support them, but, um, you know, I think that, you know, they kind of look at the, they always say, well, all the other cities are supportive, but the other cities, their, their senior centers don't have buildings, and the senior programs are operated in city buildings, and that's the difference. So, they're moving forward and everything. I had something else, but I can't, oh, I know. My other thing was that I just wanted to put out on the agenda, and I mentioned it earlier, that when we do the work plan for twenty-twenty-five, that we look at some sort of ordinance or licensing on the rental properties, so that we can have a little bit more eye on potentially negligence of landlords in terms of being, you know, harming our residents and stuff, so.
I just saw, Jesse, you wrote that down for our work session, okay. All right. All right, are you ready for your last one?
I have nothing to say.
Well, you gotta say something.
After six years, I'm speechless.
You said it all, all right.
I'm speechless.
All right. Councilmember Mackenzie?
Well, I'll say, Paula, it's been a pleasure. Uh, mound has been a wonderful, in great hands with you on the council for the last six years.
Thank you.
And thank you for all of your, you know, it's, it's a huge time commitment for everybody that's on the council, and six years is a long time, so we appreciate everything you've done and all the pot you've stirred, and, you know, all the good that you've brought to mound, so thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
You'll be missed.
We'll see.
And Merry Christmas to everybody, this is our last-
And I, I want to tell you, Paula, I'm gonna miss not going to get ice cream after council meeting with you.
We used to do that. No, it wasn't, um, what a violation of the open meeting-
If it's just two of you.
Yeah, we're just the two of us.
We just went and got ice cream, that's all.
Yeah, we, we'd go and have ice cream.
Since whenever the meeting's done that early.
Remember they ever done that? Sometimes we didn't make it.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes we didn't make it, that's true.
Alright, councilmember Casalino?
I, I don't have anything, I'll second what councilmember McEnany said, thank you Paula. But I don't, I don't have anything else to add.
And yeah, I don't have much beyond, again, thank you, six years. That's a, that's a long time.
It's, yeah, and it's not an easy job, it's all of us know.
Yeah. Thanks for being my number two. What do they call it?
You're welcome.
Mayor.
Deputy mayor.
Pro town. Deputy mayor? Whatever, yeah. Anyway, thank you, I know you filled in one time for me.
Oh yeah.
And it was the fastest meeting.
The shortest.
Yeah, thank you again, and we're gonna, in February, we'll celebrate more. We're gonna think about doing something tonight, but we thought we'd better keep our tradition of doing it at the February meeting, so.
That's good.
Try to calm to that if you're not in Texas or Florida.
Yeah. We're battling up north again, so lots of stuff on the plate.
We know where to find you.
Yeah.
Alright, number 13, we got information miscellaneous, staff have anything that they want to talk about?
I have one thing. So as you know, the, the holidays are coming up, I've, obviously it's my first time being here for the holidays. The city of mound gives a half day vacation for Christmas Eve and then requires some sort of form of PTO for the other half. I was coming here tonight, last meeting of the year, seeing if the council would be open to just making that a full day of, or of holiday. And then going into next year, amending the, the admin code to reflect that, which that's for next year, but for this year, that was sort of the request to kind of jump off. So I won't be offended either way, but I figured it's the last chance to float it.
So everybody understands the request? So basically, half day, we're, we're paying the other half anyway.
So a half day additional.
So we're just get, give staff a half day and how many, how many staff are we talking?
Well, anybody that's, it would be anybody that would be working that day would, that would be subject to the half day holiday, so it's probably everybody, but.
How many is everybody? Are you talking like public works and everybody?
Yeah, it'd be the, any full timers really. Yeah, I mean, it's, I guess they're throwing in public works too, yeah, so I mean, yeah, it'd be the city. But I, the admin code applies to everybody, so it really, it has to be universal. So either way, cause Juneteenth isn't in our admin code yet either, so we do need to go in and reflect it. So I'm sort of setting the table here that regardless, we need to get in there going forward, but. Just mentioning it now that, you know, at the end of the last meeting of the year, so.
So, so if we give them a half day, I mean, let, let's just say for public works, they still gotta, if we have a snowstorm, they're still gonna, but they would get a paid half day.
Right, well, regardless on any holiday, call-ins are still gonna be that, I think it's two and a half, whatever the union contract says, so. Those, that won't change no matter how this conversation goes. So even if you were working on the holiday, as soon as that half day's over, you're now subject to, to holiday rules for as far as call-ins go.
But the net ask is really like to provide like an additional half day so they get the full day, right?
Yeah, basically.
Cause we're already doing a half of it.
Right, to just treat Christmas Eve as a holiday, basically.
I would say, I, I am on board probably for next year. I think for this year, I would be, I kind of want to see the numbers.
Sure.
What does this equal in total for, and we just did our budget and talked about all that, so. I mean, we're kind of right two weeks before Christmas, not to be vahumbag, but.
Believe me, I, I only brought it up because it just came up today in the office, as far as how we planned for it. And then I thought, oh, well, you know, keep making notes on personnel policies and admin code things because you kind of get complacent until, you know, the issue comes up and then there you are reacting, so.
I think to make an informed decision, I think we should maybe come back with us and, or at least let's bring it to the finance committee and see, does this?
For next year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But do it for next year, I think we're probably gonna be fine with it, but, I mean, that's where I would be unless you guys feel differently.
I don't know, I mean, you know, this has no reflection on how hard you work, but you guys have so many days off, it's crazy. So, you know, at our company, everybody works half a day, you know, it's like, if they want to take it off, they take the whole day off. I, I'd want to look at the numbers too, to be honest. You know, when I'm thinking just four of you, you know, and suddenly it's like 25 people? I'd like to, I'd like to look at the numbers too.
There's other ways to get there too, you can move.
How about, how about you trade Juneteenth for the full, you know what I'm saying, maybe we can do a little shuffling around.
I was gonna say, there's other ways to do that, like we did, my work, we did, it was like Good Friday versus Christmas Eve, they kind of like moved stuff around. So there was no net additional time off, it was just in a different spot.
Yeah.
So we could just look at that.
I, I'd like, I think that's a good, I, I think getting there one way or another is, is just be appreciated, just cause. This year's a little different, being that it's the middle of the week, you know, I don't, a couple people I think are gone most of the week, but I think pretty much everybody's kind of around, but. You know, when you start getting into those, like if it's Christmas Eve's like a Monday, you know.
Yeah. And there's probably a way to get there, but it's, you know, you can shuffle stuff around too, it doesn't have to be in addition to.
So I guess this is, this is probably more of a personnel thing first, right?
And I think to make an informed decision, it would be great to see the amount of employees involved and the numbers from that day if we end up paying for another half a day. I, I'd like to see that.
Alright.
Sure.
And on that note, Maggie, I was looking at the calendar today and it still says that there's a council meeting on the 24th.
Okay, yeah, I'll go on the website, it probably didn't get.
It probably generates that automatically, but maybe just take that off, cause I had to second look and go, God, we don't really do, so.
Alright, I, I know two of us, are you on the same page with this or?
Yes.
Okay. For next year, okay, alright, so just come up with a plan, maybe you want to run it by the personnel committee first?
Sure.
And then we'll tell you what we think.
Yeah, and we'll likely just wrap it into whatever ends up being an update to our admin code, so, but I'll, you'll come to us.
Yeah, just let us know so we can steer you down the right road if you like it or not, so. Okay, any other thing else that you want to talk about? Alright, we'll take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Alright, we're adjourned.